Welcome. Thank you for attending Woodlands Annual Town Meeting. I'm Toni Boucher, your first election, and I am calling the meeting to order on May 7, 2024 at 7:06 PM. Now, the first order of business is the election of a moderator. I move the nomination of Dave Waters, an excellent attorney and longtime board member of Woodson. Dave has also served as the annual town meeting moderator in 2019, 2021, 2023. Is there a second to my motion?
Second.
Ah, Anne, thank you. Anne Dura, new American citizen and voter, seconds the nomination. Any discussion? If not, I call for a vote. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, Toni, and welcome as well. For those that don't know me, my name is Dave Waters. I've been a Woodland resident for quite a while, I must say. Welcome to see all of our neighbors here. My job is to do the annual town meeting as efficiently as we can. So the first things that will be going on will be some procedural discussions. Then we will have descriptions of the budget, of an ordinance that is being proposed, and of the bonding resolutions. And then we will have comments after each of those, and then adjourn for the vote. My first order of business is to appoint the parliamentarian. And that's mandated by the charter. The moderator is the one that appoints the parliamentarian, and I am appointing Nicholas Blamante, our town council. as the parliamentarian of the annual town meeting. With that, I'll ask Lori Hayback, our town clerk, for the reading of the call.
All electors of the town of Wilton and all others entitled to vote at the meeting of the town meeting pursuant to the general statutes are hereby notified that the annual town meeting of the town of Wilton will be held in the Bloom Center, Wilton, Connecticut, on Tuesday, May 7, 2024, 7:00 PM, to consider and act upon the following matters. One, the annual budget and tax levy for the town of Wilton set forth below and submitted by the Board of Finance for the fiscal year commence in July 1, 2024, and to make specific appropriations as are advisable and authorized by law. Upon motions duly made and adopted by unanimous vote on April 1 and April 16, 2024, the following have been endorsed by the Board of Selectmen. One, resolution appropriating 3,862,000 for the acquisition and installation of Middlebrook School chiller, unit ventilator, and ceiling tiles, and authorizing the issuance of 3,862,000 bonds of the town to meet said appropriation, impending the issuance thereof for making of temporary borrowings for such purpose. Two, resolution appropriating 1,903,000 for the construction and installation of Middlebrook School roof replacement, and authorizing the issuance of 1,903,000 bonds of the town to meet said appropriation, impending the issuance thereof for making of temporary borrowings for such purpose. Three, resolution appropriating 1,600,000 for the construction and reconstruction of Scrivener Hill Road, and authorizing the issuance of 1,600,000 bonds of the town to meet said appropriation, impending the issuance thereof for making of temporary borrowings for such purpose. Four, resolution appropriating 1,585,000 for the planning, design, acquisition, and installation of Town Hall renovations, and authorizing the issuance of 1,585,000 bonds of the town to meet said appropriation, and pending the issuance thereof for making of temporary borrowings for such purpose. Five, resolution appropriating $540,000 for the road restoration, and authorizing the issuance of 540,000 bonds of the town to meet said appropriation, and pending the issuance thereof for making of temporary borrowings for such purpose. Upon motions duly made and adopted by unanimous vote on December 19, 2023, the following have been endorsed by the Board of Selectmen. One, shall the sale of alcoholic liquor under the manufacturer permit for beer issued pursuant to Connecticut General Statute Section 30-16B as amended be allowed in the town of Wilton? Approved by the Board of Selectmen.
Thank you, Lori. I'm going to call on Nicholas Blamante, town council, for the first procedural resolution and remarks on the annual budget.
Good evening, everyone. Nicholas Blamante from Birch Moses, Town Attorney's Office. Let me just see if I could find... PowerPoint that's supposed to go along with my presentation. Luckily, I brought it on a thumb drive, so just give me one minute. I don't think we really need the slides, but it's just going to be easier for everyone to follow. Okay, so what I'm going to do at this point is a little housekeeping, basically. I'm going to call out and describe four procedural resolutions. What that means is it's just four different rules that we're adopting for purposes of tonight's meeting that's going to help move things along. So I'm going to outline these four different resolutions, and then I will call for a motion to approve those resolutions from the floor, and we'll do one motion for all four of those resolutions to save some time. And if anyone, for some reason, wants to talk about it, and after the motion's been made and seconded, we can't, or we could just take a vote if there's no discussion. So, number one. The meeting's going to follow Robert's Rules of Order. That is our parliamentary procedure, and it's the rules that have been in place for over 100 years now and are utilized by almost all municipalities for how tonight's meeting will actually be conducted. That's what our moderator is going to follow. So resolution number one is that we will govern tonight's meetings by Robert's Rules of Order. Next is time limits on any speakers. The meeting shall, so this is the second resolution, the meeting shall impose a three-minute time limit on speakers for any items. If a speaker chooses to address more than one bonding resolution, then, as you see here, it's a six-minute total time limit. Number three. What we're doing here is... We're modifying an aspect of parliamentary procedure under Robert's Rules. What we're doing is we're modifying an element of this procedure called "calling the question." So, what does that mean? At some point in time, someone may very well say, "Call the question." And so what that actually would mean typically is, under Robert's Rules, where someone in this assembly, meaning the meeting, feels that, okay, we've talked about this item enough. Enough's enough. And if there is some intention to cut off further debate, that individual can, procedurally, that's called a motion to "call the question." We urge the assembly not to make such a motion to "call the question" until all have had a fair chance to voice their views and speak. Anyone would like to, at least. So, the meeting here, what we're proposing as a procedural rule, an amendment to this "calling the question," is we're adopting a rule that gives the moderator, Attorney Waters, discretion to delay the vote on a motion to "call the question." So, basically, what that means is, again, we want to give everyone a fair shake at making any statements that they want on an item. So it's going to be the moderator's call under this procedural resolution that I'm putting forward right now. It will ultimately be the moderator's call in the event that someone does call the question, whether the moderator's going to actually allow further discussion or not. So basically, that's going to be the moderator's call. And that's our third procedural resolution. Number four, similarly, Robert's Rules outlines an aspect of the procedure for this type of meeting called "filling in the blanks." So, what that means is if we have a motion to cut a budget by a specific amount, the moderator's going to ask if there's any other... if anyone else has any other potential proposed cuts. And if there's several different potential cuts, each is going to be considered to "fill in the blank," so to speak. So then there is going to be debate on all of those suggested cuts, and then a vote on each proposed cut, starting with the largest, the initial one that's proposed, and ending at any point if a proposed cut is approved by a majority vote. Okay. So, at this point, I don't think I need to get into these additional rules. So now we can take, I'll entertain a motion from the floor to adopt those four procedural resolutions as just that one. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any debate? All right, then we'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye. Any ayes? Okay, so we've adopted all four of those procedural resolutions. Just a couple more housekeeping rules. Under our charter, the town meeting cannot appropriate more money than... more money than what the Board of Finance has recommended. They can't, we cannot appropriate money for any purpose that hasn't been recommended by the Board of Finance and is actually set forth on a line item in our proposed budget. The charter also does not allow us to reduce any line item below the town's legal obligations. And we cannot reduce one line item to then carry that reduction over to another line item. What the town meeting can do is reduce specific line items within the Board of Selectmen's recommended budget. In terms of the Board of Ed proposed budget, this meeting can only reduce the total proposed budget, not any specific line item. And in terms of debt service, this meeting can also reduce the debt service appropriation, but not below what we're legally obligated. So then how is this vote going to work tonight? Or how will voting in general work tonight? The... Basically, upon... Once we're done with discussion on the proposed budget, then a machine vote's going to be taken. So after, tonight, that will be... Occur on May 11, 2024, between 8 and 6, here in the lobby. And absentee ballots will also be available. So the choices that we have on the ballots are to approve the budget, to reject the budget because it's too high, or to reject the budget because it's too low. And so to determine the outcome of the ultimate budget vote, all rejection votes are going to be added together and then weighed against the total votes for the budget. And then there will be several other votes on the ballot as well, including the question on bonding resolutions and the proposed ordinance that would allow for the operation of breweries in town. Regarding the bonding resolutions, the, even though they are on the agenda, there will be time for discussion, but the only vote on those bonding resolutions will be on the ballot. We won't be taking a vote on the bonding resolutions at the meeting tonight. I believe that concludes my comments as parliamentarian. I'll kick it back over to the moderator.
So before we get to the real stuff, there's a few parliamentary procedures that I need to go through. I'll try and make it quick and hopefully informative, but not put you to sleep. So for those that are not familiar with the annual town meeting and with Robert's Rules, the Wilton Charter is our supreme governing document. It is the thing that we must comply with. The Robert's Rules and the procedural motion that we just adopted with the four different parts fill in the gaps where the charter is silent as to how we are to govern, be governed in this annual town meeting. So that is the process that we're dealing with. For those that wish to speak, you need to be recognized by me as the moderator. Please proceed. There are two microphones, one at the end of each of the aisles here. Please proceed to them, and we'll out-recognize you. We'll alternate between the two microphones. Only voting members of the town meeting can speak during the public comment period. Please come to the microphone, speak. Please give your name and your street address. We need to have that clear so that it's in the record before you speak. Each person, as we have said, will be given three minutes to state whatever they wish to, addressed to the question that is in front of us. And then bonding, as was noted, would actually be up to six minutes if you're talking about two different resolutions. The timing will be tracked, and we'll give you 20 minutes, or 20 seconds notice so that you can wrap up your comments in the three minutes. Any questions that you may wish to ask any of the board members that are up here will count towards your time, but their responses will not. And you'll have the choice to either ask for a response while you're standing there or to ask them if they wish to respond in a more cohesive fashion at the end. But that's up to you. Again, the question that you ask will count towards your three minutes. The response, at least for the first question, does not. Please direct any questions you have, either to me as the moderator or to the board members, but not to other assembly members. This is just between us. Please refrain from speaking twice until others have had a chance at least to speak at least once on a pending motion or question, and no one will be allowed to speak more than twice. Please live at your remarks to the immediately pending question or motion. A bit of basic decorum. Please respect the assembly, its rules, and each and every member. We're all here because we want, we feel that we can contribute something, and we need to recognize that that is the case with everybody. Please tie your remarks to the budget, the bond, or the pending question. Just as an aside, I know that this has been a rather interesting year with assessments. Assessments are not a topic for the annual town meeting. The budget is the budget, and how the assessments work is a different process. Those that have an interest in their assessments, there is a statutory process for addressing that, and I'd certainly encourage you to do that, but it is not at the annual town meeting. The rules expressly prohibit discussing, disparaging, or insulting other members, their motives, their character, or their personalities. To add to that, I would add that most of the people that are on stage here are volunteers, they are taxpayers, and they're doing what they believe is right for the town of Wilton. You may not agree with their position, but they deserve your thanks and your respect. We will not allow any participation whatsoever from non-members. Guests are behind us, behind the aisle, are certainly welcome to attend and to listen, but please do not participate in any other manner. And everyone should refrain from cheering, clapping... And everyone should refrain from cheering, clapping, or other forms of participation. If I've warned that you are out of order, please note that I've done so and correct or rephrase what you're speaking to or move on to other comments. Anyone who has the floor can make a motion to amend what is pending before, although with bonding, there is no amendment that is permitted. It has to be consistent with the charter and with the notice governing the meeting and with Robert's Rules. Each amendment will be considered separately, sequentially, and put to a vote before moving on to other business. The only difference in that will be that filling the gaps process, where if a motion is made to reduce the budget in any of the ways that can be under a filling the gaps, we will then stop, ask if there are other reductions that are proposed, and then we will vote on it as an entire process at that point. Members can ask questions about procedure or pending questions, and you can appeal most of the rulings that I make, except for those that are related to decorum. The way that you would do that is you would make an appeal, it would be seconded, and then put to a vote at that time. Voting is going to occur in a couple of different ways. You already have voted once by voice. You all, all those that are members of the annual town meeting should have received a yellow index card. There will be times when we may use that and ask people to raise those because it's easier to see whether that, who's voting for what. And it's also possible for there to be by division, which is people standing, that we do not usually do. And lastly, there could be by secret ballot if somebody made a motion to do so, and there was then a second, and at that point, we would go through a further process. Please note where you're sitting. If you're in front of the aisle, then you're, you should be able to vote. If you're behind the aisle, then you are not entitled to vote. You are our guests, and we thank you, but please do not participate. In the event of a tie vote, there is no majority, and so therefore the motion is not carried. And I, as your moderator, will not vote this evening. If there are any other rules or procedures that are needed as we proceed through this, either I or the parliamentarian will explain them as necessary. But ultimately, every, all of the questions here tonight are put to you, to your vote. You decide. There will be three topics tonight that we're talking about: the budget, an ordinance proposal, and the bonding request. Please stay for all of them. I know that some of you may have other things at home, you may be interested in the school budget only instead of the selectmen's budget, but please stay for everything because it all affects all of us. Are there any questions? Seeing done, I will call upon Matt Ramandi, the chairman of the Board of Finance, for his remarks on the fiscal year 2025 budget and the mill rate.
All right, now for the hard part, to pull up my presentation. Hi, everyone. My name is Matt Ramandi. I have the honor and the privilege of being in the chair of the Board of Finance. I'd like to introduce the other members. Seated in the middle of the table, we have Sandy Erkel, Stuart Tringberg, who's our vice chairman, Ruth Esnack, and Priscilla Ayer. Two virginal sisters, but we have the working men overseas, and so can be included today. Also, I want to start off by thanking our IT department, who've spent hours setting this up. This is a lot of work that goes into this, so I'm very grateful for that. I also want to thank Wilton High School and the school administration for hosting us here at the Kuhn Auditorium. And also want to thank the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Education, specifically our first selectman, Tony Boucher, and the chair of the Board of Ed, Ruth Deluga. There was a lot of partnership and collaboration that happened throughout this year, and grateful for their cooperation. And last but not least, I do want to thank all of you. I recognize this is a Tuesday night, at night, everyone has a lot of things that they can be doing right now, and you're all here to exercise your voice in this democratic process that we have here. I'm grateful that you're all here, it's great to see you. Now, before we begin, I want to just kind of lay out what my goal here is with these next eight slides or so. Ruth and Tony, they'll go through the budget in detail for the Board of Education and for the Selectmen, but my goal is to provide a foundation and a context for what those budgets mean for the taxes and for the mill rate. Now, we'll get more into details, but there was a lot of headlines that faced us this year, and there was a lot of writing about that. As a result of that, the boards did come together, but this was a very long process, the longest that I can think of. The fiscal year 25 budget process actually started in September of 2023, when the Board of Selectmen, the Board of Ed sent us a forecast for the fiscal year 25 budget, the Board of Finance provided guidance in November. There was a bunch of meetings between January and February where we met as one group to try and figure out, well, the tax increase could be high, what are some ways that we can help the taxpayer out? Whether it's through non-impactful cost savings, potentially increasing some revenue, and that's combined with dozens of different models that we built, went into the thinking that I'm going to present here today. So you go into the first slide, this is the budget summary of the fiscal year 25 budget. So I'll hit the key highlights. On the Board of Education side, the request is $93.2 million, which is a four and a half percent increase. For the Board of Selectmen, it's a $35.7 million budget, which is a 3.7% increase. Debt service is roughly flat, except for $15,000. So when you combine all that together, the taxes that the town of Wilton needs to collect to pay for all this is a 5.2%, and our mill rate is 23.9435, and we will discuss all these numbers in a lot more detail. Now, the next question is, okay, great, but what does that mean for the taxes that I have to pay? Well, this is an average, and your actual taxes will depend on your particular circumstances relates to the revaluation this year, and we'll discuss that in more detail, but the average is 8.7% if you include the changes to residential properties and residential motor vehicles as well. Then some other good news, our pension plan is 110% funded as of July 2023, and Moody's reaffirmed our AAA rating last May as well. We actually have a meeting for the next fiscal year, coming up in three weeks, actually, two weeks. So on this slide, I wanted to take a moment to discuss what exactly are our sources of revenue and our sources of expenses. So if you look at the left side there, you can see three quarters of our revenue, it comes from everybody in this room and a lot more outside. Seventy-five percent of our revenue comes from residents, almost 80% if you include the residential motor vehicles. The next largest chunk comes from commercial property, which is 13%, and the remaining nine or 10% comes from other parts of the grant list, not residents, and then 4% is from non-grant list revenues. This will be things like permits, conveyance, taxes, fees, basically revenue that the town of Wilton collects, departments, daily function. Now, on the right-hand side, that's the expenses. Two-thirds of this year's budget, consistent with previous budgets, goes to the Board of Education. 25% is for the Board of Selectmen, 7% is to service our debts, and this is, that 7%, that's a number that the Board of Finance and others spend a lot of time picking me out. Best practice is to keep it under 10%, and we are well below that, which means we have very strong borrowing capacity should things come up. And the remaining 2% is split, 1% for our reserves, this is in case anything comes up over the next year to buffer, and then 1% for tax relief as well. So on this slide, I want to provide a bit of historical context for the mill rate. Now, we're discussing mill rate change, I'm talking about it growing, but if you look, last year, the mill rate was 29.3, and it's actually falling 5.4 to 23.9. There's a couple of things going on here, and I'm going to get a bit technical, but I've got a lot of questions about this, so I want to take some time to go through it. What the mill rate is, it's a ratio. It's the ratio of the budget divided by the grant list. Now, the problem is, this year, our grant list got me down, it is different this year than it was last year. So what the Board of Finance does to normalize it, to make sense of it, is we restate last year's grant list. So we look at the grant list last year, we apply the revaluation that happened, and that's where we get a 23.0 restated mill rate for '24, and that 23.9435 number I mentioned is a 4% increase over last year. So on this slide, I wanted to discuss what's driving the mill rate change. So 2.8% of the 4% increase comes from the operating budget, 2.1% is from the increase in the Board of Ed budget, 0.6% is from the Board of Selectmen budget. However, that big chunk in the middle, 1.2%, is from the non-use of excess fund balance, and I apologize for that detective term. What is excess fund balance? Excess fund balance is effectively the savings or surplus money that the government has left over after a given year above a certain requirement that we have, that historically the Board of Finance and town government has given back to people. However, last year, our rating agency, Moody's, has let us know that they require reserves that Wilton has to have, it's higher than it used to be, and there's a lot more detail to go into, but I'll bore you guys with getting in the weeds, but it's higher. And as a result of that, we are not, we cannot write that check and typically have historically. And actually, the Board of Selectmen just last night have passed a policy saying, one, that Wilton is committed to maintaining our AAA rating, and two, that we're not going to give back that excess fund balance as we have in our past. This was a hotly debated topic among the Board of Finance and the Board of Selectmen and many others as well. Now, ultimately, as we considered it, our view is, yes, this is short-term pain, but it's in the long-term best interest of our town and our residents. By maintaining our AAA rating, we have stable access to bond markets at the cheapest interest rates available. This is short-term pain, but it's investment in the long-term future for Wilton. So I want to talk about what this mill rate means for taxes. Before we get into that, I do need to spend a second on our revaluation, because it's going to delve into what happens with taxes. So if you look at the left-hand colorful chart, our grant list, which they give it as the net assessed value of all the properties in Wilton, it grew 28.7%. The biggest part of our grant list growth by a mile was residential property, which grew 35.28%. This is, this is a great thing. The average home in Wilton is now valued at $1 million. That's great. The problem is because the assessments are higher, it means that taxes go up as well. And you can see that on that right-hand chart. That's the money chart for understanding what revaluation means to taxpayers. So if you look on the, I guess the dark blue, residential property increased as a percent of the grant list from 73% to 77%. Now, residents actually pay two types of taxes, right? We pay property taxes and we pay motor vehicle taxes. When you combine those two together, actually residents are, it's went from 79% of the grant list to 81% of the grant list. What that means is standing still. If the budgets do not increase, and as we talked about, of course, they are increasing, we would have to pay, on average, 3.2% more, just with the budget standing still. So with that background, I'll discuss what the average tax change is. Now, I'm talking about the average here, everyone's individual taxes, they'll probably vary from this. What your tax change will depend on is how your home assessment has changed, will depend on how your cars have changed, but this is the average across all 6,200 households in Wilton. So within that 8.7%, 3.2%, as I just mentioned, is driven by the property and motor vehicle revaluation. 1.2% is from that non-use of the excess fund balance, I'll call it the rating agency change. 3.1% is from the change in the Board of Ed budget, 1% is from the Board of Selectmen budget. Now, I think it's important to note that 4.3% over half, 4.4% over half of that change there is from exogenous factors. It's from things that no one on this stage can control through evaluations, and it's from the rating agency change. Now, this is just an average, again, everybody's individual experience, it's just that, it's individual. So on the right side, I just want to provide the formula for how you can calculate your own taxes. A couple weeks ago, a few months ago, everyone should have received a letter from Vision Appraisal to conduct our evaluation in the mail. You can also find it online, because I think it's visionappraisal.com, type in Wilton, type in your address, you can see what your 2023 assessment is. What you do is you take that number, which in this example is $1 million, you multiply it by 23.9435, divide that by 1,000, and that gets you to what your taxes are. And you can do the same for your previous year's taxes as well, if you want to do that math. You can also email Board of Finance in New York. So I want to end by just summarizing what our recommendations are, and there's a lot of numbers on the slides up there right here. We recommend unanimously that the fiscal year 2025 operating budget is $140,339,906. We recommend that the mill rate levy is $135,569,504, and that the mill rate would be 23.9435. The Board of Finance also unanimously endorsed the bonding requirements as well, which our first selectman will discuss a little later on. With this, it's composed of $3.9 million for a new chiller, a unit ventilator, and ceiling tires, tie-off tiles for Middleburg School, 1.9 million for a roof replacement at Middleburg School, 1.6 million for rebuilding a section of Scrivern Hall Road, 1.6 million for renovations to Town Hall, $540,000 for road paving. Thank you very much.
Now call on our first selectman, Tony Boucher, for remarks on this lightning's budget.
Thank you, Dana. Before I start, you should know that all of these presentations and slides are posted on the town of Wilton's website, and there's going to be a video of this annual town meeting available to everyone tomorrow, especially for those that will be voting on Saturday. Also, you're going to note that there's going to be a few duplications and repetition amongst some of our presentations, but those repetitions are really needed and warranted. I'd like to begin our Board of Selectmen budget presentation by introducing you to our Board of Selectmen. Our second selectman, Josh Cole. Great to everyone. We have Baz Mubulsi, Baz, Kim Healy, and Ross Tartell, all of whom have been engaged and effective board members during our budget deliberations, as they are on all town matters that come before us. Their thorough review of each town department's financials produced a balanced and sound budget represented this evening. I'm very grateful for their tireless dedication in crafting this budget while they balance professional and family duties. You should know that each of them does double duty, as they also serve on the town's Water Pollution Control Authority, which takes even more time away from their private responsibilities. Their public service represents the very best of Wilton, and we thank them for it. I would also like to thank the Board of Finance members and the Board of Finance chairman, Matt Ramandi, for their diligence, wise counsel, and close communication with the Board of Selectmen, the town administrator, Matt Nikrabacher, and the town staff. They've been active partners from the very beginning of the budget season, and their support proved very helpful. The Board of Ed leadership and Kevin Smith have also been exceedingly collaborative as we work through the school's maintenance and repair needs. The high level of cooperation and nonpartisan tone of their deliberations have made an otherwise stressful process pleasant and productive. This turbulent budget season that you've all heard about was even dubbed harmonious by our very popular news outlet, The Morning Wilton, which follows all things Wilton very closely. Our skilled CFO, Dawn Norton, and her staff deserve very high commendations. They put in very long hours, often working late into the night over the weekends to shape this budget. As the months wore on, they made themselves continuously available, patiently answering every question, and my God, there were a multitude of them, as talent leaders factored in severe financial headwinds on several fronts, making this year unusually difficult. I'd also like to thank the employees of the town of Wilton who serve our residents every day with great dedication and commitment to duty. The fires on I-95 that stopped traffic for days, the collapse of the Key Bridge in Baltimore, even our little earthquake that had done a lot to, more than rattle the nerves, served as painful reminders of how critical and sometimes dangerous the work that is the emergency response teams and the DPW and road crews that undertake on our behalf every day. and road crews that undertake on our behalf every day. You're all equally aware of how difficult the circumstances are surrounding our budget year. Some have called it the perfect storm. A property revaluation dramatically increased home values to store ties. A $130 million of deferred building repairs and maintenance that needs to be addressed. Union contracts. ARPA funds that are no longer available to us from the Veds. Inflation. And as you heard, our rating agency, Moody's, that changed the rules to earn their AAA rating. Taken together, these ominous thunderclouds encircled our budget deliberations. To recap, our town faced several challenges that together presented a very unique environment in which to negotiate the budget. The Board of Selectmen, Board of Education, and Board of Finance, however, collaborated to navigate property revaluations, Moody's requirements, and critical school and town building repairs that can no longer be delayed. Despite these extraordinary circumstances, the boards listened closely to residents and then worked together to strike a balance between educational and talent needs while maintaining fiscal discipline and staying very close to the Board of Finance guidance of 4%. As a result, the proposed 2025 operating budget for the town and schools, as you saw, came in at 4% increase from 2024. In introducing our budget this evening, I'd like to review our budget priorities. First of all, let's see if we've got the right slide up here. We want to provide the high-quality services that Wilton residents and businesses expect at the lowest possible cost. We want to focus on cost savings, increased use of technology, software upgrades, and appropriate staffing levels. Professional IT consultants have assessed our systems, and they report that there is a critical need for a complete restructuring of our department to reduce costs and improve online services as well as closely watch the security gaps in our system. There are significant changes that are being made right now, and more will follow, and this is an imperative necessity. We want to provide departments of safety and first responders with adequate resources and training to respond to emergencies and protect the community. We will create responsible budget to protect the taxpayers' investments in school and town facilities, which the Board of Selectmen is responsible for, by providing adequate funding for maintenance and repairs. We also want to provide oversight required to bring these building projects in on time and with budget. There were delays originally in the new police station construction. They have been addressed, and the project is moving forward very well. We need to address crumbling infrastructures that you're going to hear about shortly. Overcrowding, lack of space, workplace needs, and lack of heat within the Town Hall complex. Budgets for the next two years will be strained as many of the town buildings are updated in response to age-related repairs, again, some serious space needs and the influx of town development. Costs associated with these upgrades may exceed budget expectations, and all discretionary funds are being allocated to these existing projects yearly. We need to provide assistance to those in need and enhance recreational and cultural activities while staying within the budget. We are, therefore, going to pursue grant opportunities to reduce the taxpayer's share of funding for infrastructure and other initiatives. There also is nearly $800,000 in state reimbursement from the 2017 Miller Driscoll Building Project that has been pursued, and these payments should come in, we hope, shortly in the next year. We are very focused on modernizing town government functions and implement more responsive customer service to provide a better taxpayer service. So where's our status? How are we doing? Construction has begun, as you've heard, on the police headquarters in January, and it's doing very well. The expected completion date should be in June 2025. We need to replace the town's outdated financial management system, and this is currently underway. UNIS, the new system, will be live on July 1, 2024, to start the upcoming fiscal year. When completed, UNIS will provide faster access to data, expanded functionalities, and improvement in staff efficiency. I think that's going to come a great relief to all of our members on the headquarters of Select and Board of Finance. The town has upgraded every method, as we heard, our IT system over the next six months, and this is really going to help us with security against cyber attacks, file sharing capabilities, cost-saving through software consolidation, and reducing the outside use of computers. The town is approaching maximum usage of its assigned sewer capacity with the Norwalk wastewater treatment plant. Some of you have heard about that, as many of these development projects are needing to access more sewage capacity. This could limit business growth and curtail some developments. So discussions are currently underway with the City of Norwalk, and we will continue these negotiations until a resolution is reached. Okay, let's take a look at some of these significant budget factors that we have. We need to address long-delayed maintenance and repair of school and town facilities. And also, I want to kill it on the right area. We are going to be looking at some of the new developments that have been approved by planning and zoning that are under construction or for which applications are expected, which will impact future revenues and expenses both. So if you take a look, I might blaze over some of these very quickly. As I said previously, these slides are available on our website. But as you can see, the long list here, they represent nearly 940 new apartments, could be as many as 1,000, which, of course, translates into more individuals and more motor vehicles in town. The good news is, the next slide, I ask, you know, what are the top 12 taxpayers for the Town of Wilton? As you can see, highlighted in yellow is ASML. We're very proud to have them in our community. They not only represent nearly $400 million in taxes, both one and three of our tops taxpayers, they also represent 3,200 employees and growing exponentially every year. This is going to go well. On May 17th, we have our meeting with the AAA Bond Agency that want to know who our top employers are. Not only are they a great partner with us in Wilton, they also are always finding funds that they can contribute to many of our nonprofits in the community that you've been reading about. Some of the other significant budget factors. We need to, no question, you've heard about this quite a bit. We need to address the long-delayed maintenance and repair of our school and town facilities. Recent studies indicated that $130 million is necessary to rehabilitate the condition and create additional space for over the next 15 years. We've had staff increases due to state mandates and public safety requirements, including more training for search and more training for firefighters, and increased poll workers to comply with early voting laws. We also have had staffing increases due to workflows. We've had our finance department payroll position expanded. It no longer can be shared with the Board of Education. We've had increased use of part-time and contracted inspectors for building and health departments. As you can see by that long list of developments, that's become very necessary. You know, we should note that there are three department heads at Town Hall, who each assume the responsibility of two to three formally separate positions. The Town CFO is also the Town Treasurer and the CFO for the schools. The Tax Collector is also the Town Assessor. There used to be two positions there. The Assistant Director of Public Works is also the Facilities Manager for the town and partially for the schools. This really is unsustainable over time. Wilton has lost skilled staff to other towns as a result. It is also true that development growth equals increased demand for services. This is being seen across all town departments. Let's take a look very briefly. And I'm going to just whizz through this because you can look at them. You can see the amount of work and transaction in the assessor's office and the tax collector's office. By the way, one and the same person. You can see the town clerks' annual transactions. And the police department calls for service up 5% just from last year. You have the fire department's operations. Land use is heavily, heavily used. Not only do they have drop-ins, they have average calls, they have emails by a great amount. Annual inspections, 300 to 100. The Public Works Department. Not only are they doing the police station and construction project, the townwide paving program, they're very involved with the school projects, school buildings, they're involved with Amber Farm, our rental houses. By the way, we have five of them in the Town of Wilton. We have Town Hall and certainly other very necessary items. Look at Parks and Recreation. A lot of folks don't realize that they actually got 90,000 visits in the last year, and they're forecasting to be over 100,000 in 2024. That's good news, and yet it also demands quite a bit more staffing attention. I will have to tell you that on the police side, we really do need to provide our Department of Public Safety for responders adequate resources to respond to the emergencies and protect the community. We're a four officer short, and that's something that we're hoping to close the gap. We had that last year. We need to continue to do that. As for the fire department, Wilton's changing structural footprint has created an urgent need for new systems and training for each of the firefighters who currently rely on antiquated systems. In the past three years, the fire department has seen 5% to 12% increase in overall call volume, and expect that this number will continue to rise. This is predicted on the increase in construction of multi-story residential offices and manufacturing sites as well as larger complex expansion of existing residential dwellings. This summer, a new four-story residential building with over 107 apartments will be opening. This residential structure is the first of its kind in our town. But it's not the last. Four additional residential hotels and business structures are being built. Are having approved for building, and each of these could be as much as four to five stories high with over nine additional apartments. Beyond this increased housing, ASML, who again is a top worldwide technology leader and Wilton and Connecticut's most important employer, will be adding 1,000 new employees. They're now at 3,200, requiring a two-story addition to the facilities. Additional housing plus the influx of employees increases the number of lives the Wilton Fire Department is responsible for keeping safe. So this does create some urgent needs. Not to mention, they do need different skills now, and the training is possible because some of the sophisticated facilities on the part of ASML require a great deal of technical responses to some of the equipment and apparatus that they have here in their building. And by the way, at Comstock, don't forget, we also have a dollar ride program. For example, we've added a new driver train to help special needs residents. And so this is part of the operations that very few people know about. Those that use it really appreciate it a great deal. Okay, so what are some of the significant budget factors that we're looking at? We have, as you've heard again and again, ad nauseam, I guess, state mandated property revaluation caused a huge shift, as you saw from our Board of Finance Chairman, in the burden from commercial to residential. Drop in vehicle values have also followed with a sharp pandemic increase will reduce personal property tax expenditures in the new year. There's also an expected drop in conveyance tax following a pandemic run-up in real estate sales due to the lack of inventory and high interest rates. Some of this is really behind some of the astronomical, you know, increases in the property recalls that we've seen. As a result, there's an expected increase in demand for central services as Wilton grows its population. Growth creates greater demand, as you've heard, for central services and also upgrade our infrastructure. The increased volatility in utilities, pending rate case at Pura, a possible sale of a quarry water company is also consideration, as you've heard, the loss of ARPA funds that were used previously. And there's always inflation and wages and salaries. Right now, we're going to be engaging in a police contract negotiation that expires through June of this coming, this year. Okay, a little bit more on Moody's Bond Rating Agency changes. Matt Ramandi previously explained the change in practice of managing Wilton's excess fund balance, which does affect this year's budget, as you saw, by a substantial amount. It's understandably confusing to many how Moody's new rules could affect Wilton's taxes or why a AAA rating is so important. The answer is our long-term financial wellbeing. Moody's is an agency, the greatest town like ours, on our fiscal responsibility. Having a AAA rating, as we do, assures lenders that we are responsible for and we're able to pay our debts. This allows us to receive loans at the best possible interest rates. Without this, building and infrastructure projects would become prohibitively expensive. So of course, the prudent thing to do is to maintain this rating. And to that end, Moody's is requiring towns to maintain a higher bond balance ratio. This means setting aside 25% to 35% of our budget instead of the 10% that was originally stipulated. They also, though, have expected that the receipt of a one-time bond recurring revenue will not be used to finance ongoing operating expenditures, programs, or activities, or to offset taxes, as Wilton has historically done. In short, this money that has been used in part to offset taxes is now required to be saved for emergencies or to put towards, believe it or not, they agree, to a one-time expenditure that would otherwise be a bond item. Okay. Post-pandemic real estate sales. They've declined, believe it or not, and will affect revenue. Real estate sales peaked during the pandemic as people in large cities moved to the suburbs. You've heard a bunch of stories, but they're true. Low real estate inventory ran up home prices by a significant amount. Many buyers offered $200,000 or $300,000, and last month, even $500,000 in one property, more than the asking price, often on that day when multiple bidders were there, causing home values to skyrocket. Well, this certainly helped the sellers, but it also affected our rebills. So as you saw from Matt Ramandi's presentation, residential increases were about 35% on average. Commercial increased about 15% to 13%. And the average altogether was about 28%. Real estate closings and available inventory have declined, but guess what? The prices of homes continue to rise, as you just saw, by all of these folks that are willing to put up quite a bit more than what was asked. An interesting news item that maybe some of you saw, maybe you didn't. Non-kill road in Wilton was the only road in Connecticut listed by Agent Advice Real Estate Website as the 10 most coveted addresses in America. Not just Connecticut, but in America, in the U.S. Amazing. And, but because of the low inventory, our conveyance tax revenue is predicted to drop by half. Here's a chart where you can significantly see this. This is being produced by our real estate industry. Conveyance tax revenue is expected to decline sharply, and they have declined by 54% since the pandemic era peak. The conveyance tax revenue is expected as well to decline sharply because available inventory has dropped by 78% since the epic peak. Make a note, just in the last year, in the last 12 months, closed transactions were down 24% and homes for sale were down 22%. Again, adding to probably the cost of buying a house in Wilton. So very briefly, you just heard from Matt the changes from prior year in the town's budget. I'll just review this very quickly. In our town operating budget, our request was an increase of 3.2% to 3% from the previous year. Our operating capital request increased by 17.3%, but bringing both of them to actually be a total of 3.66%. Here is a more detailed slide that gives you a summary of all the expenses, but again, is available to you online. But I also want to know other expenses that the town Board of Selecting covers for a lot of different organizations, in fact, also for the schools. Our school nurses cost the town $972,623, which is in this budget. Other towns do include this cost in their Board of Ed budgets, but Wilton's Board of Selecting carries this cost each year. Amber Farm at a tune of $42,000. Just so you know, that Amber Farm was purchased by the town in 1999 for $2.6 million. We have a very detailed deed that goes along with that that outlines the responsibility of the town and it clearly states the town is responsible to keep all of the buildings on site in good working order. Right now, they're not, and so we're going to be hopefully addressing that in the near future. We also support our paramedics and Wilton Western Advanced Life Services for $318,000 a year. The Georgetown Fire District at $510,000. Also, believe it or not, we have to pay a portion of the probate quarter, $20,000 and it's mandated by the state. We have the Wilton Library Grant, a substantial amount of the function of the libraries paid by the town at over $3 million increase. There were some increases this year. The Wilton Volunteer Ambulance Board gets $104,500 from Wilton in this budget and the Route 7 bus is $5,000. We have additional information in these slides that is available to you. I'm not going to belabor it because I know I've already probably tired you out already, but I thought it was important for you to know, you know, what, what goes on in the town. There are, again, we have information on staff and by department, just so that you know that the electricity costs, energy costs have exceeded the budget due to the high degree of volatility and lack, by the way, lack of heat at Town Hall. You'll hear about that in more detail when I present the bonding request for next year. But we don't have heat in a lot of the offices at Town Hall. This requires vertical space heaters, which consume much higher electricity. To stabilize the cost, the town has reauthorized its contract to 10,000 cents per kilowatt hours for the remainder of 2024 and '25. We have a high rate of fee reflects estimated acquiring price increases. Again, renewable energy payments. We are partners with a middle town solar farm that, by the way, gives us more back than we pay, so it offsets the cost. Our insurance rates are also, we're looking at reductions to achieve better workers' comp plans. But we also have seen increases due to the need for additional coverage like cybersecurity, which wasn't the case before. Fuel storage, increasing property values, and historically under budget based on the actual expenses that come in. Here we've noticed the pension contributions that we're required to put in. Our pensions are in pretty good shape, as you've heard before. And then finally, some other things that we have to consider coming up in costs that are being ahead of us. I just want to mention a little something to conclude on, on the general risk that we see going forward. There is certainly unpredictability about a place that we don't have. There is litigation and there are many risks to a town budget and legal liabilities is also a great concern. Fortunately, proactive engagement has minimized our litigation risks and we have resolved many of our long-term standing lawsuits at minimal cost. Who knows what the next major weather event or natural disasters? As you've heard, we had an earthquake. You know, it shook some of our buildings. We have a continued nationwide and statewide shortage. As you saw, a lot of lack of space for employees. And now it's the end of another legislative session. As you know, I spent a little bit of time up in Hartford and it's always very interesting to see what happens the last 48 hours. We're always at risk when the legislature is in session and we will not know what the new mandates will be that are passed out from the state. Unfortunately, as you've heard, there have been a rash of bills that would further remove the town's control over its planning and zoning decisions. And one concerning bill being considered right now, right this very minute, would place another unfunded mandate on town regarding its pension benefits, workers' compensation, and others that would hamper our ability even to negotiate our own contracts. We hope that that does not move forward, but we're watching that and concerned. Additionally, potential expansion of 8-30G applications resulting litigation from this, as well as bills to further, as I said, erode PNC's ability to control our own local development and place it in the hands of the state. Again, potential for reductions in state ECS and special ed funding. It did get reduced in special ed last year, but I'm hearing some good news, possibly some restoration of that. I want to thank you all for being here, for your engaged citizenship and for continuing to make Wilton an exceptional place to live, work, and raise a family. I really appreciate your consideration of this vital budget proposal before you. Thank you so much.
Now ask Ruth DeLuca, our Chairperson of the Board of Education, for her comments.
Thank you. Thank you all for being here tonight. My name is Ruth DeLuca and while I'm up here as the Chair of the Wilton Board of Education, I'd like to thank and acknowledge my fellow board members, Nicola Davies, Lori Raffaro, Pam Eller, Heather Priest, and Poppy Pearson. I'd also like to acknowledge and thank Superintendent Smith and his entire team for their hard work and dedication to education, our kids, and building the budget. A special thank you to CFO Don Morton, Marian Salvato, and Lila Rudiness in the BOE Business Office, and to Lucille DiNobia for their countless hours of work behind the numbers at this presentation. The Wilton motto is for a better world. The board is proud and humbled to be part of our town's rich legacy of education excellence and preparing tomorrow's leaders. Our world needs them more than ever. Our schools serve as the heart of our community and we take immense pride in our commitment to education. In 2018, our community came together to formally adopt a mission and value statement. Our mission is to inspire and prepare all students to make meaningful contributions in a globally interdependent society. We value ensuring student safety and wellness, fostering joy in teaching and learning, personalizing instruction, nurturing productive partnerships with students and families, and providing challenging and authentic learning experiences. Through this process, we also developed a portrait of a graduate that represents the vision for the 21st century's skills, traits, and attributes that our students need to succeed in college, career, and life. Those attributes are being a balanced and healthy human being, a contemporary, multi-literate scholar, a self-navigating expert learner, a creative entrepreneurial designer, a courageous ethical leader, and an active socially sensitive citizen. Since 2022, the district has been actively embedding these attributes in learning experiences across the grades and schools. Our approach was prescient. In 2023, the World Economic Forum published its Future of Job Report listing the top 20 skills for 2027. The top five are creative thinking, analytical thinking, technology literacy, curiosity and lifelong learning, resilience, flexibility, and agility. It's as if they copied our portrait of a graduate. Our program is working and we are raising our mission and values. Student growth and achievement across the district is remarkable. Allow me to share a few examples. Niche Rankings places Wilton third of 122 school districts in Connecticut. This past spring, Wilton High School had the highest percentage of students who passed both sections of the SAT in the state. We topped our district reference group peers of Darianne, Nickanen, Westforth, Weston, Richfield, and Reading in reading and writing and came in second in math. Wilton High School had the highest percentage of students in Connecticut and our district reference group passing the Next Generation Standards, science standards, at over 90%. We returned to pre-pandemic passing rates on advanced placement exams and over 75% of high school students take AP or UConn ECE courses. Our seventh graders had top smarter balance assessment scores in both English Language Arts and in math in Connecticut, including our district reference group. For the second year in a row, Wilton's seventh grade sits on top in math. Students in grade five and eight scored in the top 6% of districts in the Next Generation Science Standards. In the class of 2023, 136 students earned the sale of my literacy and there were 20 Division One athletes, one Division Two athlete, and 15 Division Three athletes. For the last four years, the NAM Foundation has made Wilton the best community for music and Wilton High School won a Halo Award for Best Contemporary Musical. Wilton High School students took home several Scholastic Art and Writing Awards, including three Best in State Awards, eight gold medals, and six silver. Our girls' ski team won the state championship for the third year in a row last winter and were runners-up this winter. Our boys' ski team were state champions this year. Boys' swimming and diving was class M runner-up. Boys' tennis was class L state champions. Boys' lacrosse were FCF champions. Boys' football were MM runner-up and 37 fall athletes received postseason recognition. Either all FCF or all state. Just last week, the girls' varsity lacrosse team beat Darianne for the first time since 2011. The girls were ranked eighth in the nation and play Nickanen at home this Thursday. This year, we had 21 National Merit Commended Scholars, 10 semifinalists, and all 10 semifinalists were named finalists. We have much to celebrate and to be proud of. Members of the class of 2024 have already accepted enrollment to the University of Pennsylvania, Dartmouth College, Northwestern University, Emory, John Hopkins, University of Chicago, and University of Michigan, just to name a few. It's the results that keep people moving here for our schools. While every year brings with it budget challenges, this year is particularly difficult because of substantial non-education tax pressures that we cannot control. Property revaluations and the new Moody's requirements for AAA bond ratings, combined with commercial real estate values and continued high vacancies, represent more than half of the proposed tax increase. Navigating these headwinds has not been easy. I'd like to specifically acknowledge and thank the Board of Finance and Chair Matt Ramandi for their partnership and support throughout the entire budget process. All three boards, working together, have brought forth proposals that reflect our community's commitment to fiscal responsibility, outstanding education, and effective town services. In full recognition of this year's circumstances, the board presents this budget tonight as a monetary representation of the staff, programs, and services necessary to continue to fulfill Wilton's education commitment and obligations to our students, families, and community. The budget process began long before tonight. In the late fall, Superintendent Smith and the board agreed on budget goals. The budget must serve to strengthen the high-quality pre-K to age 22 education program, fund the district's continuous improvement plans, and manage rising costs. In December, after each cost center assessed their needs for the next year, while looking at budget goals and asking what it will take to carry on and also invest, the budget stood at almost $97 million, representing a 9% year-over-year increase. That first maintain and invest budget included additional staff such as a humanities coach and STEM teacher for Miller-Briskel, a science teacher for Cigar Mill, SEO and music stipends at Middlebrook, an additional dean, teacher, and AP coordinator for the high school, two additional sped teachers, and a DBT trainer stipend. None of these new investments are in the budget before you tonight. None of the requests for increases to library book collections or furniture are in the budget before you tonight. The budget before you tonight stands at $93,238,159, representing a 4.5% increase over this year's current budget. Since the first school budget proposal in January, representing a 5.56% increase, the district and board has been working hard to find additional budget savings outside of staff and programs. Through bus rerouting, technology leasing, the temporary consolidation of the potion base in SING, and other non-labor reductions, the board's education budget is $600,000 less than the original January proposal. The board recently unanimously adopted an additional $300,000 in reductions to align the budget by Board of Finance resolutions before the town tonight. The final reductions are mainly from the overtime and additional timeline items. While reductions are never easy, we remain just on the manageable side of the line. Because of this year's non-budget tax drivers, any budget reductions below where we currently stand at 4.5% will have minimal tax effects, but very large education effects. Any budget reduction beyond this point will jeopardize class size, our commitment to professional development and curriculum, co-curricular clubs and activities, and the ability to maintain and strengthen the strength of Wilton's overall education program, from academics to sports to mental health. Importantly, this budget restores essential programs affected by previous years of budget reductions, maintains current programs and staff, and will accomplish our educational commitment to students, families, and the larger community. Each line item in this budget has undergone rigorous scrutiny, reflecting the thoughtful judgment of our superintendent and the Board of Education. Programs cut last year due to budget constraints, such as the debate club. Teacher salaries alone are rising at 4.2% and while 69% of teachers are at the highest salary step in lane this year, next year, 74% of our teachers will be at the highest salary step in lane. 80% of the budget, about 74.2 million, accounts for the total cost of staff. This alone represents 4.83% increase over last year, before you even get into paying for the other necessary components of running a school, including transportation. Transportation at 5.1 million. Special education operations, including out-of-district tuition, at about 6.5 million. Technology, infrastructure, services, and equipment at about 2.2 million. Utilities and insurance at about 2.4 million. Building maintenance and repairs stand at about a million. The budget does include four additions over last year. An additional MLL teacher to support the increase in our multi-language learner population for $110,000. In October of 2022, we had 49 MLL students and we started this year with 71. We are planning for 85 MLL students next year. An additional teacher at Cigar Mill to support schedule changes for about $80,000. A high school volleyball coach for $6,000. And teacher stipends to restore clubs and activities across all the schools at $200,000. With this budget, we fulfill our budget goals by restoring clubs like the bait full-time operations, maintaining current class sizes, keeping our commitment to professional learning, strengthening our overall educational program by tightening the implementation of the Acceleration Framework and Portrait of a Graduate, implementing STEM initiatives, and developing rigorous academic opportunities and new high school courses such as AP Psychology, AP Computer Science, AP Research, Cybersecurity 1 and 2, and honor area, honors area studies. With this budget, we support continuous improvement initiatives such as thinking classrooms, promote student wellbeing and social emotional learning, including by maintaining current mental health full-time employees and supporting the continued development of SEL and DBT curriculum. And we fulfill our commitment to special education, all while managing rising costs. Schooling today is not the schooling of yesterday and it will be different for tomorrow. Today's kindergarten, where kids, kids in the year are reading fluently, is yesterday's second grade. Standards are more rigorous and challenging than ever before. Education is both an art and a science, and breakthroughs happen every day. We need to understand and meet the challenges of our times. We need to be prepared to respond to rapid shifts in technology and how kids experience the world, their environment, and relationships. Our children have phones with more technology than what was used to put the first man on the moon. It is no longer just a 24/7 news cycle. Our children's lives are now 24/7 with social media. And the rise of artificial intelligence in all aspects of our lives has just started. We are beyond the three Rs of reading, writing, and arithmetic. We must now all teach into global literacy. We must now all teach into global literacy, the interpersonal skills needed to engage with people from different places with different cultures and backgrounds. And media literacy, the skills in the post-information age to recognize and reconcile bias and mistruth in media. And digital literacy, the skills to effectively navigate and utilize all of the digital tools at our disposal. The challenges of education have never been greater. The world does not stop at the classroom door. Our teachers and administrators need the tools and resources to manage and confront the academic and social effects of our rapidly and ever-changing world. Over the last ten years, the Board of Education has put forth both fiscally responsible and educationally thoughtful budgets. And this year is no different. We are getting tremendous value for our money. Every year, the cost of business increases, and there's only so long we can do more with less. Since 2015, the average increase in our budgets is a lean one-point-five-six percent. The average inflation rate for the last ten years is two-point-six-five percent. Since 2015, our annual budget growth rate is almost half than our next most closest comparable district. This year, our budget requests fall third from the bottom, with Westin and Mitchfield requesting the least, a three-and-a-half and three-point-nine percent. And Westport, facing a normal healthcare cost, requesting the most at eight percent. Darien is at four-point-seven percent, and New Canaan at five-point-nine percent. Over the last ten years, our per pupil cost increases in the bottom half of comparable districts. In 2021, our cost per pupil ran in the middle. For 2223, that has changed. We are now below all comparable districts except Richfield. Current analysis indicates that pre-K twelve enrollment is projected to decline slightly next year by about twenty-six students across the district, and then to begin to grow by about nine percent through 2033, thirty-four. Last year, we froze our budget in September. This year, in January. What does a freeze mean? It means all spending requests, despite budget allocations, require prior district approval, and few are approved. This happens when unpredictable special education costs and/or facilities needs force a change between budgeted and actual expenditures. This places further stress on light items that are held flat or reduced year-over-year, such as books and furniture and supplies. Once again, we are budgeting to just maintain our program. If any budget reductions are proposed tonight and pass, we will have to cut programs and staff. We just don't have anywhere left to go. A budget below tonight's proposed four-and-a-half percent will affect administrator and teacher-to-student ratios, art, music, sports, and co-curricular programs. We will continue to pursue excellence, but our overall program will be compromised. Ensuring adequate funding for our schools keeps our community's commitment to education and is also crucial to maintaining our property values and the desirability of our town. The budget request puts us back on track and ensures the continuity of our programs. This budget recognizes the large tax effect of the revaluation and asks the town to please not compromise our schools because of the revaluation. This budget asks us to continue to pull together as a community and support our educational commitments. Each child who walks through our doors gets one chance at each grade. Thank you for your support and commitment to education and our shared future for a better world.
Right, I will now call on Matt Ramondi, who is Chairman of the Board of Finance, to make the motion to approve the fiscal year 2025 budget and propose Millray.
Yes, the most exciting part for me, the reading of the motion. All right, it's a long one. I motion, following annual town meeting, is for the appropriation of a budget for expenditures amounting to one-hundred-and-forty-million, three-hundred-and-thirty-nine-thousand, nine-hundred-and-six dollars for fiscal year 2025. And levy a tax of twenty-three-point-nine-four-three-five minutes on the estimated net taxable balance of October first, 2023. That is payable one-half on July first, 2024, and one-half on January first, 2025, except for bills of a hundred dollars or less for personal property or real estate which are payable in one installment, July first, 2020. Taxes on automobiles shall be payable in one installment on July first, 2024.
Is there a second? Thank you. All right, now it's your turn. Those that wish to speak to the budget, please proceed to the microphones that are at either aisle here. Please again remember that you are limited to three minutes, and we'll remind you of that. And also, please let us know your name and your street address for the record.
Yes. My name is James McSweeney. I live at twenty-six Chicken Street. I came to Wilton in nineteen-seventy-five. And at that time, my friends in Stanford referred to it as the boondocks. And required directions as how to get here. Now, after having gathered and here to present this presentation today, it's going to be now the boondocks. Congratulations to everybody who had a successful year, and I would heartily endorse the budget. I have two observations. One observation is about the lease. I don't think that the... I think we ought to commission take care of our lease better than we are. The state decided to cut back on limited liability, and that has affected the lease tremendously. And they don't complain. But they have the option of doing a little bit extra that is necessary. And since we live only fifty-five miles from Times Square, we are vulnerable. So I think that we should do something to increase our lease. I would suggest that, since limited liability is the problem, that we, the town, along with the other towns, surrounding towns that cooperate with us, pay for the extra limited liability insurance for the lease. And I think it would be money well spent. I know it's not in the budget, but there are ways to find things. Thank you. Thank you.
Joshua Kessler, the chief of the board of town road. First, thank you for all the boards for their hard work and long presentations. An interesting conference president here tonight. I think most people follow this detailed process. Everyone made complaints, might not. But in the interest of people like me wanting to get up, drive a KTM test prep, go to work, I would encourage people to observe comments briefly. I assume most of us are better aware of our mind made up. Again, thank you all for your hard work, but hopefully we come in well tonight.
Charlie from Five Holy Place. So I've been in town about twenty-five years now. There's one comment, I'm looking at the budgets, you know, a thousand new units being proposed for Wilton. I mean, if you mentioned that it was a rural town at some point. It's not becoming a rural town at this point. And I think, you know, if we do want to build a lot of apartments and drive up the community, I mean, that's more taxes for all of us sitting in this room, straight out, right? So it's twenty-four thousand kids, a thousand units, one kid in each, that's twenty-four million. It's two, a hundred-and-forty million budget. That budget's going to go up for everyone in the room. I think we should all be paying attention to what the building is going on in town and how it's going to affect our future as far as taxes go. If we're not happy with the amount of taxes we're paying now, it is one-hundred percent going to be more than it is today. And I know some, you know, the builders will say, well, only a few go into these apartments. But, you know, kids go into the apartments, but they can't guarantee that. So all of you nice folks will be here sitting saying, we need more firemen, we need more police, we need more this, we need more that. And there's nothing we can do as citizens because these folks are already in town. So my suggestion for everyone is to really think about all the building that's going on in town. Make sure that we're conscious of, if we're not happy with this budget and the increase going up and up and up, it's going to get a lot worse with another thousand units being proposed. So just keep that in mind. Thank you.
Moses Salazar, April sixty-one, Ryanos Lane. I fully support the budget, and I fully support the speaker before me about keeping comments brief.
Deborah McFadden, one oh nine Westport Road. Thank you to all of you sitting on the stage for all your hard work. I do recognize the perfect storm of every negative thing that could hit this, the revaluation and Moody's and inflation. And there's like seven different factors that all came together. With that said, I think you've done a great job. I support the budget. I really think it's important that we vote it. I truly hope there are enough people that we hit the fifteen percent threshold, that we are actually voting to pass it, and it's not automatically passed. Because if we don't have fifteen percent of the electorate actually vote, it's an automatic pass. I'm grateful for all that you've done, and I encourage those who have friends and neighbors who aren't in this room to make sure they turn out on Saturday to vote. And I strongly support this budget. I'll keep it short.
Ellen Murphy, twenty-nine Holy Place. I would like to singularly acknowledge and thank Dr. Kevin Smith and the Board of Education for recognizing the multilingual learner program as the sole ELL or MLL teacher for the first fifteen years of the full-time program that we had. I'm incredibly grateful for their devotion to that particular subset of our population. But I just wanted to publicly thank them for including another instructor in the budget. It means quite a lot to me. Thank you.
Sri Sechen, one fiftyth Street, Cannon Road. I thank all of you for spending time, and I know it's a voluntary job which you guys do. Thank you so much. But I just want to make an observation and a quick question. The first observation is the greatest trend for this town is we are all friendly to each other, nice to each other, and that's the greatest trend. And the greatest weakness is the same. Because we are too nice to each other, not challenge things, not question. And hopefully, the CFO and others are doing that to each one of those items. Do we need twenty-five AP programs? Justin has thirteen, New Fairfield has six. What does it buy us? So that's an observation, hopefully, for the future, people who keep... Basically, it's a comparison, which Mr. Kunisberger here knows at this time. Can you compare light towns? And similarly to the presentation, great job of doing that. I do a lot for executives, and they ask me questions which are challenging as well. What'll be interesting is to see with all these commercial properties in town where we made money on, which a Westin doesn't have or a New Fairfield doesn't have, how do we spend that extra money? What does that extra money give us, which they don't do? Or, if you don't want to increase, how are they keeping to those things without those commercial properties in those towns? That'll be an interesting point to see in these presentations. And lastly, Tony, quick question on the conveyance tax, which happened in 2020 when we did all those extra sales. So more money came in than what we anticipated. What did we do with that money? Was it sent into the reserve fund just for the future? I know we throw the kitchen sink at all these various factors which come in. But the time when extra money came in, would have been nice to see all that extra money, all those sales which came in, conveyance tax at eight percent, six percent, whatever, what did we do with that? That'll be interesting to know. Thank you.
Sure, I'm just answering the question that Joe mentioned on Matt Ramondi, the Chair of Board of Finance. I believe the question was asked, we had excess money coming in from the more property sales and conveyance tax. Where did that money go? It's a great question. So whenever there is, with a dozen generations saved in the budget, so historical, what the Board of Finance did, so we had the extra money, and it was above the ten percent threshold that Moody's or Radiator C set, we would give it back to the tax makers. So when I was talking about the excess fund balance, that is exactly what that money was composed of. Now, going forward, we are right now below the new twenty-five to thirty-five percent or twenty percent. So it's going to be going towards building with that fund balance. But that's an excellent question. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Steve Hudson, six Glenville Road. I rise principally to thank all of you. I have been so impressed this year with how all three boards have worked together so cooperatively. And that's been a wonderful tribute to you, and it's been said since September onward we've been doing that. It's remarkable to see, I know it represents a huge amount of work on the part of all of you, and it's very, very heartwarming for all of us. I also want to say a special thank you to all of our teachers, administrators, leaders in town government, workers in town government, first responders, the whole host of people in this town who make our town work so well and who work so hard to accomplish that. That is a wonderful, wonderful tribute to this town and to the devotion of the people who serve it. We're tremendously appreciative of that, all of us. We want you especially to know that. Thank you.
David, back to sixty-two Wolf Pig Road. I want to thank all the boards for their work this year, having followed the process. I think the boards put a lot of time in, deliberated all the light items carefully, worked collaboratively together, obviously much with the process than recent years. So I think that's great. I wholeheartedly support the budget. We discovered some big costs very early on in the budget process this year to repair schools and other maintenance items. Part of the reason, you know, in addition to the residential reassessment for why our taxes are just going to have to keep going up is to deal with these capital costs. As a town, we need to continue to grow our commercial base. It's fantastic that ASML is a large contributor to the tax base of the town, but we need more of them. And so we need more development. We need more development for housing, more diverse sources of housing, and more capacity for the town to grow so that we don't continue to have large taxes increases in the future. To the contrary, having a larger tax base, having more people, letting the town develop and change will mitigate our taxes going forward. And I very much encourage everyone in the town to think in that manner and to vote in that manner as well. Thank you.
My name is Lindsay McKay. I live at eighty-seven Volcans Highway. I grew up in Wilton and in fact, raised my own children from the same raising my parents did for the amazing community and schools. This is Teacher Appreciation Week, and I want to start off by saying how much respect I have for our teachers. They are amazing. I am not a teacher, and I could never do that job. But also, their hands are tied by decisions made by their administration for what curriculum they have to use. Up until about a month ago, I knew nothing about Wilton's reading curriculum, which is Teachers College, until very recently, a good friend and neighbor told me about the podcast Soul Story, which talks about how Teachers College teaches kids to read by guessing, using picture power, also known as queuing. My son is currently about to finish second grade, and this is exactly how he reads. And he hates reading because he doesn't know how to do it. He looks at the start of the word and he guesses the rest. After I was told he was on grade level at the end of kindergarten, he has now been in reading intervention for the past two years. Thankfully, once, now that I understand that it wasn't him or me, but how he was taught to guess at the words, I've been working with him to overcome this. And just last week, in addition to all the amazing Horton Gillingham work his reading interventionists have been doing with him, things are finally starting to click and come into place. He just told me he likes reading just a little bit now that it is easier. And I only learned about this from the podcast. This is my hometown, and I am heartbroken. And for the past three years, Wilton has been fighting the state on how to change this reading curriculum. They have been forced to change it just recently. And during this two years, they've also made our teachers train on the new Teachers College curriculum, even though they knew that wasn't on the state's... program, even though they knew that wasn't on the state's approved list. So our teachers are now having to retrain on yet another new program and this all takes time. And I just am shocked that this is our reading curriculum. And on May 29th, the committee will be deciding on how to implement the new program, but right now they're suggesting to pilot the program for half of first grade, half of second, half of third. So I just want to make sure your parents are aware of that because parents I talk to don't know that that is happening. Reading is not simple. There's no one-size-fits-all program, but I also am thankful that I now know how to help my son to have him taught in kindergarten in Wilton and my daughter coming up finishing kindergarten. I don't want her to have the same issues. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak to the budget? Seeing none, we will close the comment period. So just so that everybody remembers, the motion that is on the floor is, that has been seconded, is to that following the annual town meeting for the appropriation of a budget of expenditures amounting to $140,399,906 for fiscal year 2025 and levy a tax of 23.9435 mils on the estimated net taxable grant list of October 1, 2023 that is payable one-half on July 1, 2024 and one-half on January 1, 2025, except for bills of $100 or less for personal property and real estate which are payable in one installment on July 1, 2024. Taxes on automobiles should be payable in one installment on July 1, 2024. Again, the vote will occur commencing after the meeting and we will proceed at that point. Please stay for the rest of the things that are about to occur because we want to get that wrapped up as well. And with that, I will now ask Nicholas Biamonte to come up and to give remarks as to the alcoholic liquor ordinance that is being imposed.
Thanks, Dave. Good evening again, everyone. Nicholas Biamonte, Town Attorney's Office. So this item is a little unusual to appear on the annual town budget meeting ballot, but it is an option that our Board of Selectmen has here to put to the whole town whether we want to authorize the operation of breweries here in town. So we're not going to actually be voting to amend this item. I will open it up for any comments after I make a brief presentation of what an approval here would mean, but that's the long and short of it for tonight's purposes. So Wilton, as many of you may know and have lived through, was originally a dry town. So alcohol was not allowed at all. And our state law contemplates one process for expanding the types of alcohol that is allowed in towns that were originally dry. So we're in a little different category. It's a little bit more nuanced how we get this additional category of alcohol sales and that's why we're putting it forward to the town meeting tonight. The Board of Selectmen had considered this starting last fall and held a public hearing in December and then in January voted to, again, put this to the town meeting for the ultimate vote. The Board of Selectmen does, under our charter, have the authority itself to pass this, but again, because of the circumstances and the fact that the town has only incrementally opened up the doors, so to speak, to alcohol, this is why we're giving it to the full town meeting. Just by way of background, our local ordinances, which would be amended if this is approved, our local ordinances currently allow three categories of sales of alcohol. One is, the first one, we adopted back in the 70s for country clubs. The second is restaurants and the third is package stores. So tonight, or this new proposal would add another category to our allowed alcohol service, which again would be breweries. And what that actually means is only entities, companies that have been granted a state brewery permit, it's a specific type of permit that's set out in state law that only allows for on-premises sale as well as off-premises sale of beer manufactured on the property. So what this would do is allow for the manufacturer and sale of beer alone in town for both on-premises and off-premises consumption. The hours of operation for on-premises consumption, so if you just want to go to the brewery and have a beer right there, the hours would be the same as what we currently have established for restaurants, so consistently. And what that is, is Monday to Thursday, we're looking at 9:00 to 1:00 a.m., Friday to Saturday, 9:00 to 2:00 a.m., then Sundays, 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 a.m. For off-premises sale, so if you wanted to go to the brewery and buy a six-pack and take that home, the hours of operation for those types of sales are different. They would be the same as those currently applicable to package stores, which hours of operation would be Monday to Saturday, 9:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., and Sundays, 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. That's really the long and short of it here. It's going to be a yes or no vote if we want to authorize this. So if there's anyone who would like to offer comments, now's the opportunity.
Again, if you wish to make comments, please come to the microphones. Three minutes and please state your name and address. Yes?
Hi, I'm Campercella Burke, 150 Pipercell Road. I have a few questions about the ordinance that I've had for the last few months and I haven't been able to figure out. One of mine, I think, has just been answered here. This is just for retail sale. There's not going to be wholesale selling of beer from this brewery. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct. I'm told behind you.
Okay, so just wholesale, so that's it. And then because as a town, we're not having the final say over how many breweries or where they're located, the state has basically been given the right to give up the liquor license. And then how much control do we have as a town to limit how many breweries are in our town? Do we have any control over that?
Yes. Again, Nicholas Biamonte, Town Attorney's Office. So a quick question. Our Planning and Zoning Commission has the power to define where in town these breweries would be allowed to operate and how many we ultimately allow. That hasn't transpired at this point, but that is something that the Planning and Zoning Commission can do through the passage of a zoning regulation. My understanding and discussions with Land Use Department is that that is in fact what the next steps would be and the commission has that at top of mind for purposes of limiting where these breweries could potentially operate.
Okay, because one concern I had is we have a resource in town that doesn't pertain to other liquor stores in town. It's water and breweries require anywhere from, I'd say, from what I understand, four to 13 gallons of water for each gallon we produce. So my concern is that as we report in development, that our resources might be strained if we had a lot of breweries in town, but now that we know they're not going to be wholesale, that's good. But how big of a tail operation are we looking at? I just want to make sure that there is some zoning regulation that is going to limit, that is not going to limit our use and our say in how we use our water and where these are going to be. So it's good to know that zoning is going to pass the regulations. So I'll look forward to seeing that. Thank you.
Hi there, Spencer Robinson at 51 Black Overlake. One, thank you so much for the really thoughtful questions. Really powerful. Thank you obviously for the good answers. I'm voicing my support for this measure, breweries purely as a means of just like social gathering and community. There was another gentleman earlier who spoke about one of the greatest strengths of Wilton is our people, who we are, who are so friendly, so kind, so welcoming, so open. And I'm a, I'm a newbies in town. I've entered just over three years and honestly, it's just such a welcome, incredible environment. I think, I mean, I can't count a day when I'm not hanging out or at least connecting to so many friends and family and kids and sports and just like corraling the masses in activities and just having fun. I mean, I'm hosting a Mother's Day brunch for seven families, just what we want to do with each other. So when I think about a brewery and I think about what these options bring and having been to many breweries in the past, it's not a place where obviously like a bunch of college kids are going to shop for beers. I view this as an extension of our community, of our ability to gather with friends, with family during warm days like this, to gather outside, play games, and then certainly during the winter when we all kind of shut it down to actually have a place to come together with our fellow Wiltonians, my friends in other towns. I just view this as such a great opportunity to kind of be the catalyst for so much needed communal growth in the town center. So thanks so much.
My name is Nestor Cortez, 54 Scotty Oak. And I'd like to voice my proposition to this brewery. If we want beer, clearly I love beer as much as anybody else, but when I moved to town between 9:00 and 10:00, I put a line with the house. And what I'd like to remember, I remember the days when we could not have any alcohol in town. But we have allowances now to allow the sale at restaurants and everything else. However, I would like to stay away a little bit, separated from all of this and don't allow the sale of, I mean, the breweries. If I want a brewery, I got one across the water in Ridge. I can go there and have a great time and come back home and Wilton will still be the old, a little bit of the old Wilton that we used to have. So on that, I endorse. Quite good. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak on the ordinance? Yes, one more.
Tom Ducey, 95 Millennial Road. I think Wilton's community would have safer roads without a brewery in it, and so I oppose this.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak on the ordinance? Hearing none, we will close the comment period on it and again, this will be part of the vote after the meeting. At this point, we'll move on to the bonding resolutions and the first act will be that I would entertain a motion to dispense with the reading of the full bond appropriation and authorization resolutions. Do I have that motion? Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All those who did, please say hi. Any opposed? Thank you. That passes. I will now turn the podium over to Tony Boucher for comments and remarks and the motions on the adoption of the resolutions.
Thank you for sticking with us tonight. We have a number of very, very important items on the bonding agenda. As we conclude tonight's annual town meeting with the combined Board of Ed and Board of Selectmen bonded capital request for 2025, we find ourselves at a very pivotal moment for the future of our beloved community of Wilton. Some may wonder why, in a year when so many Wilton property owners have seen their home values spiral upwards, should we invest in town infrastructure? Oh, and by the way, my own assessment has my property tax going up 43.3% this year, probably one of the heist. And it's the most that I've experienced in the 40 years when I first built my home here. The answer to this question is these bondable items have been put off for so many years that they have reached a crisis point. For too long, the maintenance and improvement of Wilton's core infrastructure have been defined due to more immediate school priorities as it should and unexpected challenges like COVID-19 pandemic when everything ground to a halt. However, we can no longer afford to keep the proverbial can down the road. Key facilities across our town are in a state of disrepair that demands action. The past administration recognized this and to their credit, hired consultants to assess critical needs for our schools and municipal buildings such as roof repair, water damage, refrigeration, and heating systems. Their report identified over $130 million of priority items that should be addressed over the next 10 to 15 years. There's a long list of bondable expenditures that we would have liked to move forward this year. Town leaders, however, are acutely aware that this is a tough financial landscape for men. The well-being of our citizens and the funding constraints our town is facing has been top of mind as we weigh what is needed against what is urgent for fiscal 2025 this next year. The bonding capital requests have been pared down to only the most essential items. These are the critical infrastructure priorities and repairs that town engineers, a team of consultants, and our school facility managers have deemed first priorities. In terms of our old 1930 town hall, looks great from the street, right? But the front pillars are in danger of falling. One already has. We had to put it back up. It was very expensive. Windows, by the way, are wrapped in plastic sheets from October through May. You don't see this from the road, but if you come inside, you'll notice it. Wood trim on this beautiful old building is rotting. Its concrete front steps are cracked. You're going to see some fixtures at the end of this. The heating system is so old it's beyond repair because replacement parts no longer exist. Many offices are cold enough to require portable space heaters and employees are forced to wear winter hats inside. At Middlebrook School, mold and humidity have become a danger because of the faulty chiller and ventilator systems. This has caused some ceiling tiles to buckle from the trapped humidity and now they too must be replaced. Creeping damage, weakening systems that may cause new things to break, and inflation are all reasons why the longer we wait to fix these existing issues, the more expensive they become. These items will be on the agenda tonight for your approval, but there's also, as you just heard, this brewery ordinance on the ballot, which is a potential bright spot for Wilton. When the question for allowing breweries in town was posed at the first selectmen's public hearing, many members of the public spoke in favor of them, citing how they foster community and tourism, support local farmers by using local ingredients in their brews, offer employment opportunities, and bring variety and interest to downtown Quoten. The Board of Selectmen, the Board of Education, and Board of Finance are in solidarity that phasing in the other needed repairs and structural projects over the next 10 to 15 years is the most practical plan. It is true that material and labor costs will escalate the further into the future we go and many items may evolve and be subject to change, but town leadership agrees that proceeding carefully is worth the incremental cost. In addition, a special committee will be formed this summer to vigorously prioritize and oversee this long-range capital improvement plan that will include members of Board of Ed, Board of Selectmen, and Board of Finance. In short, we're proceeding with care, improving what we can afford to. Unfortunately, this means that some things that were very strongly desired by people in town, like pickleball courts, I just picked up this sport too and I love it, or that are desperately needed and valued like ambulance farm buildings, which we are required to repair, they must wait until next year or maybe the following. But with your guidance and support, we will get there, keeping our debt service below 10% and our Moody's rated at AAA. So what is our criteria for capital project borrowing of the debt? How boring. Okay? It has to be one we're borrowing. It has to be reserved for long-term capital construction, the purchase of real estate, the purchase of high-value equipment like fire trucks. Also, the eligibility of these projects, usually in the aggregate, meaning bundled together with a projected lifespan hopefully of 10 years or more. We can, however, take smaller related, they have to be related, capital projects and combine them to meet the 250,000 threshold. Bonding cannot be used to cover normal operating expenses. Basic repair- Basic repairs are considered operational expenses, not eligible for bonding. Some bondable items can be done internally also. You don't have to borrow for every one of them and money, like prior Department of Public Works garage construction. Booties, as you heard before, will support using excess fund balance for a bondable capital buyer, not again to offset a budget tax increase. Again, I may be repetitive here, but it's important for us to understand this since you will be paying the bills. Long-term capital borrowing through bonding is an equitable way to spread the burden of pain for long-term capital projects and also for capital facilities. Its bond rating is higher than the ratio of money available for capital expenditures. Again, Wilton's AAA gives us the highest possible rating and lowest cost for borrowing because of its long-term history of fiscal discipline. And again, we keep, you know, $250,000, we hope. Again, that is our limit and with a 10-year lifespan because it's very expensive to bond. It's very expensive to borrow, especially these days with inflation. Items with a 10 to 19 lifespan can be bonded over 10 years and items with a 20-year life can be bonded over 20 years or more. There is one exception, which is town-owned roads and bridges, which is on this list tonight. The value is not determined based on an individual road basis, but together. The bonding to cover operational expenses, as you heard, is strongly discouraged and could result in rating downgrades. They do keep, you know, keep watch over that. Such as painting and carpet are considered operational expenses unless, however, if they're included in a major renovation. And what does that mean? It's restoring at least 40% or more of the building. So again, the authorization of approved bonded project will never expire. That was a question that many people asked. Once you approve, we can hold on to that bond. Once approved, a bonded project can sit on our list until we decide to complete the work and add it to a bond sale to reimburse ourselves. We do not have to sell bonds to cover any specific project until we're ready to do so. Past practice would be to bring projects that are nearly complete to the market so we can reimburse only the expenses we incur. So in other words, if we come on under the cost of what you've approved, you know, that will help us in the end. The town can bond projects over several years. For example, the police headquarters is bonded for $10 million and still has up to $6,400,000 to bond. We can time the sale for cash flow needed on this project. So if voters authorize a project and the actual cost comes in less than authorized, we only bond for what we need, just so you all know. Here are some of our significant needs. Engineering studies, as you've heard, identify a significant need for repairs and renovations to multiple school and town facilities that have been badly damaged. We are looking at school repairs to the tune of $100 million over 10 or 15 years and town municipal buildings to the tune of $30 million plus. Most of these projects are eligible for bonding. Project plans are being designed right now to spread the cost over a 15-year period, although that's very hard to do, it's quite raised out, to minimize the impact on tax rates. Project planners must calculate cost escalation. So as time goes on, those costs for that individual item will go up. They are, of course, a work in progress and they'll evolve, are subject to change with scheduling public over such a long period of time. Okay, so what are we looking at? School and town buildings. Several municipal buildings are in need and need of immediate repair. Operations have expanded with rapid growth and development so that there's more, as many of you have already noted and stated, a demand for services and problems since the conclusion of the pandemic. We know that quite a few projects have been approved by our planning and zoning. By the way, Board of Selectmen has no control. They are an independent body voting into office by vote view. So if interested, you can always run for the planning and zoning commission. Okay, we have some interesting pictures for you in a little bit. The town hall and annex no longer have space, believe it or not. Many offices are severely overcrowded, hampering the ability of staff to serve the public and creating substantial and substandard working conditions. The health department, for example, has three people sharing one room. You know the meeting rooms, as some of you that have been here all the time, both at the town hall and at the annex? By the way, they're all gone. They have been cut up into cubicles. The IT offices are in a hall closet at town hall. And HR has no private space to conduct confidential interviews. This has been quite a change over the last couple of decades. The 1930-year-old town hall lacks insulation and has no key dust, you've heard, in many offices. And you can often see in the winter, which really surprised me when I first came into office back on December 1, I saw people wearing jackets and hats and gloves at their desks on cold days. I even have a space heater in my office and I brought one in for the conference room. Antiquated single-pane windows, though they look beautiful right from the outside, they need replacement. Cold wind actually blows through the windows and are covered with large sheets of plastic to keep the heat in from the space heaters that we have. Okay, some of these slides are maybe repetitive. I just want to give you an idea of why we have space issues at the annex. The amount of work that the local works and construction management group do addressing all of our town needs. We also have all of these other responses that they have. I think this is important. If you have time to look it up on our website, you can go through it. We also have the Department of Public Works and the Board of Education projects that they're always working on. Again, they are school buildings, but the town is responsible for all of the buildings in town, including the school buildings. Okay, let's take a look at what we're going to be doing here soon. And this is also some of the projects they have worked on previously or in the process of doing so. Okay, right here on this slide, you're going to see exactly what you're going to be voting on after this meeting is approved. We're going to make motions for each of these resolutions and hoping to get a second, but the actual vote will take place outside this room in the hallway for tonight and then also on Saturday. We have, in our bonded list, we have, if you've never been on Stryker Hill Road, you know that it is eroding and has shoulders and it's very dangerous. So we do have to replace and fix that particular road. And the other, that's $1,600,000. And then also our annual road construction, which is seven miles every year. So we can replace them as over time. That $540,000 is represented only a portion of the $2 million is required every year. The reason it's so low this year is we had excess leftover funds from the previous year that we added to this, so it does come to a total of $2 million at the end. You see our municipal buildings, all of those listed of the town hall together totals $3,724,520. The next slide is really about our road repairs and how we can take a good look at that. It's really important for you to know exactly how the road repair functions. I'm not going to go to all of the detail of that. But in particular, you should know that the town hall repairs includes the replacement of boilers, replacing those single-pane windows I just talked about, the front and sides of the town hall are where it goes into its arc. It's for supplemental heat. In the ceilings, the repair and buttress of the front entry columns. The concrete stairs, if you looked at the stairs coming into the front door, you'll see that they're cracked and eroding. And there's plaster in the railings, also restored fallen brick and cement from the outside of the building. We have to repair the vault to prevent it from falling through the floor inside of town hall as well. It was built a long time ago and it does contain many of the natural heat-related architectural details. And so we really have to address that. In fact, you know, the working conditions is like working in a grease weight at some places and drives up our energy bills, but it also makes for an uncomfortable work environment and presents Wilton in a very poor light when residents and guests visit town hall. Okay, just to review, these are some of the items that you see that also include some of the school items that we really need to address. Here you will see a roof replacement we need at Middlebrook. That's an expensive proposition, but extremely necessary at $1,900,000. We need to replace the chillers and rooftop the HEA seat units, which includes also the interior tiles along with that. So that comes to basically a $5,700,000 expenditure of bonding. Remember, these are going to be done without further increasing debt service and cost to the public. The total of all of these items, both Board of Education and Board of Selectmen, is around $9,480,000. But knowing that it's typical that we usually have about $10 million worth of bonding items each year. So how do we cover the cost? The good news is coming to you right now. There is significant bonding capacity remaining for Wilton to address its building repairments and that most of these items can be bonded without adding any new cost to the tax gap. The Board of Finance recommends that town leaders keep our debt service to not more than 10% of the town's budget. Debt service is the total amount of money one pays back to a lender each month. For Wilton's purposes, there are several bondable items of the past, like the cost of Miller Driscoll School, for example, that are now being paid off. This gives us room in our debt service to borrow for new projects without raising taxes to conquer the cost and/or cut deeply into our budgets. The town is looking at all of the projects we need to do as part of facility studies and planning them in sequence so that new costs are added to the debt service at the same time the older debt is falling off. This keeps the total debt service level when these infrastructure needs are being addressed. The town currently makes on payments of slightly $10 million per year. In fact, in 2024, it's about $10,341,000. The older bonds mature and are being paid off. New debt can be added without increasing its annual debt service budget line. As I said earlier in the presentation, the Board of Selectmen will create a new ad hoc building committee to prioritize first future needs and repairs. The committee will sequence these new projects to coincide with the payoff of older bonds, thereby keeping the overall debt load constant to prevent tax increases. I emphasize that again and again. I know I'm repeating myself, so you'll remember, just to give you some confidence that this is not going to add to our taxes going forward. So here's a really good graph. This was done by our bond council that shows, even they said to us, shows significant bonding capacity to borrow more without increasing taxes. You can see the bricks there that are red. That's the additional capacity for us to borrow funds for these very needed, very, very needed projects. And now they say, you know, a picture is worth a thousand words. So here's a few pictures for you to look at. This is the reconstruction of the dangerous curve and crumbling soldiers' shoulders on Stryker Hill Road. Now you see a little bit of the town hall, those beautiful columns, those five columns you see from the road that look so wonderful. Well, if you get up close, you're going to see that they're not so wonderful anymore. And also, you're going to see the cracks all alongside that front step. Those are what people come and see when they're coming into our beautiful town hall. You can also see the side pillars and how they're rotting out. And here's our wonderful, beautiful windows, but yet covered in sheets of clear plastic to keep the cold wind from rolling in. It doesn't do a very good job. That's why we have space heaters. And there they are, those wonderful space heaters. The one in the middle is the one I brought from home because it's bigger. It can heat a larger room. The other ones are small, right at your feet. You can see our staff in their cubicles. This is during the day in the winter that have to wear their hats and some warm clothes, along with their tiny space heaters, right behind you. Ah, and here is our water-stained ceiling tiles caused by leaking roofs. The roof leaking has been repaired, but you can see still the water damage. And here is the peeling paint. Not a good look if you're coming straight out of the town clerk's office, which gets the heavy traffic. You can see it's peeling right on the walls. We really do need to address that. And this is above our finance office. And one of our finance people is right above his head near his desk. Ah, weakened foundation, aging heating plants, schools, the aging chillers that we just talked about, and the roofs that need to be replaced at Middlebrook. And this is the future. This is our much-beloved, very popular Ampler Farm Yellow House, which, by the way, our wonderful partners at ASML, their home office in the Netherlands, just provided a $324,000 gift for them, but only to be used for programs and scholarships for students. We cannot ask them for anything having to do with infrastructure and buildings. And these are the buildings we are responsible, according to a deed mandated by the deed that we need to keep in working order, which you can see, they're not in working order. That is Ampler Farm White House. Has great potential, but it needs a lot of work. And that will be coming to you in future years' requests, but not this year. This year, we're just the ones that I just showed you. You know, I'm going to conclude by saying that, you know, we recognize that there is no question a difficult time in Wilton's financial history is right now. But the truth is that years of deferral due to other pressing issues have allowed a massive backlog of capital needs to accumulate across our town's aging infrastructure, including roads and municipal buildings. The bill is finally coming to an end. This is a heavy burden, but one we must shoulder if we want to preserve Wilton's quality of life and the wonderful new commercial entities that are here in the new residents, not to mention those of us that have been here a very long time. Fortunately, as you saw, we possess a physically sound cap pool. Years of prudent fiscal management have positioned us with a AAA credit rating and ample bonding capacity to make these overdue investments responsibly. So it's not that hard for you to vote for them. We can address top priority projects immediately while spreading remaining costs over a manageable timeframe without increasing borrowing costs for them. You know, Wilton has shown, time and again, that we really come together when our community's well-being is at stake. We stepped up to renovate Miller Driscoll School in 2017 and approved the construction of a desperately needed police station in 2022 while keeping debt levels stable and within recommended thresholds. We must continue that spirit of proactive reinvestment before higher-priced emergency repairs become unavoidable. So I come to you, to all of you, to seek your support for these 2025 bonded capital funding requests. The safety, efficiency, and basic functionality of our core municipal assets are at risk without concerted effort and action. By united behind a targeted investment strategy now, we can start to fortify Wilton's foundations and infrastructure for decades ahead. We owe the future generations the commitment to reinvest in the town we all love and to pass it along in a condition we can be proud of. I have every confidence that together through judicious planning and community support, we can overcome our building challenges and cement Wilton's reputation as a thriving, well-maintained, and forward-looking community. I thank you for your consideration of these important repair needs facing our town and I look forward to working alongside all of you to write Wilton's next chapter of renewal and restoration. So now, these are the choices you have before you. Resolution one. I am making a motion to approve a resolution appropriating $3,862,000 for the acquisition and installation of Middlebrook School's chiller, unit ventilator, and ceiling tiles and authorize the issuance of $3,862,000 bonds of the town to meet said appropriation and pending the issuance thereof, the making of temporary borrowings for such purpose. Do I have a second to my motion? Thank you. Second is heard. I further make a motion.
May we have a motion to combine all of the bonded items together into one? May we have a motion to combine all of the bonded items together into one motion as presented? Unfortunately separately?
Yes, unfortunately, we're not allowed to, but thank you. That would be much better for sure. Okay, I further make a motion to approve a resolution appropriating $1,903,000 for the construction and installation of Middlebrook School roof replacement and authorizing the issuance of $1,903,000 of the town, of the bonds of the town to meet said appropriation and pending the issuance thereof, the making of temporary borrowings for such purpose. Do I have a second? Second is heard. Resolution three. I make a motion to approve a resolution appropriating $1,600,000 for the construction and reconstruction of Scrivner Hill Road and authorizing issuance of $1,600,000 bonds of the town to meet said appropriation and pending issuance thereof, the making of temporary borrowings for such purpose. Do I have a second to this motion? Heard the second. Our Board of Finance Chair, please keep me on track for saying exactly the right number I should be saying. Okay. Resolution number four. We're almost there. I'll do one more after this. I make a motion to approve the resolution appropriating $1,585,000 for the planning, design, acquisition, and installation of town hall renovations and authorizing the issuance of $1,585,000 of bonds of the town to meet said appropriation and pending the issuance thereof, the making of temporary borrowings for such purpose. Do we have a second? Ah, thank you for that. And finally, I made the motion to approve a resolution appropriating $540,000 for the road restoration and authorizing the issuance of $540,000 bonds of the town to meet said appropriation and pending the issuance thereof, the making of temporary borrowings for such purpose. Do we have a second to that motion? Thank you. That concludes our resolutions.
Thank you, Johnny. All right, so we will now open up the public comment on the bonding resolutions. Just a reminder on timing that you have three minutes. You can add up to six minutes if you want to speak on two bonding resolutions or more. But per the town charter, please remember that bonding resolutions cannot be amended. It's an upper down vote at the end of the, after the adjourned town meeting. And please again state clearly your name and street address. Yes?
I'm John Smith, and I'm from the 10th Road. So we have made a lot of, I mean, great work on all the work, but we have made a lot of decisions based on the Moody's AAA rating. So there are multiple ratings downgrades or something can be done without any problems. And US government does not have the AAA rating. So why are we so much, making so many decisions without, for AAA rating? And why is AAA rating can be bought from insurance companies? So did town consider what is the spread between AAA and double B, triple B ratings or something like that?
We have been asked many times the difference between a AAA rating and a AA and what that costs us. A lot. In fact, billions. It is not a good idea for the town to pursue a lower downgrade. And it's not something I would support or Board of Selectmen would support. And I believe for Board of Finance also, same concurrence.
Thank you. Go on inside.
My name is Harvey Gans, 296 Cannon Road. So first, I'd like to talk on the call together, if I may, on the bonding resolutions. I've come around first reluctantly, skeptically, then eventually enthusiastically to support all of them. I've come around to that for a number of reasons. I don't think Wilton should have here. I think we should be without here. We came here for a remarkable quality of life 60 years ago and savvy fiscal management, both rare in this part of Connecticut. We're going to have 15 years, not 10, of hard choices ahead. I'm an architect. I've worked in all these domains. This is picking shop work, without question. However, I hope we'll have new homeowners, not just 1920 rental units, who will invest and live in Wilton. I'm gratified that there will be an ad hoc committee who should challenge each consultant's report rigorously, civilly, and productively. The town campus needs places for us citizens to meet. The town center needs places to go after 8:00 PM. So most of all, let's show Harvard how great local control really is. Thank you.
Patty Temple, Drumhill Road. The Police Building Committee was originally the Police Town Hall Building Committee. And as co-chair for both iterations, I had the opportunity to become very familiar with the state of Town Hall. The committee was originally tasked with evaluating Town Hall, the annex, as well as the police building. The annex at Town Hall were originally taken off our plate, but it was on our plate long enough that we did some preliminary space needs assessment, some of the building inspections. And it was on there long enough for me to become mortified with what I learned. I'm a real frugal gal. But as a taxpayer, I'm embarrassed at the working conditions that we have for our employees. I can say without question that every office that I worked in, the building has been structurally sound. During cold months, I have been warm enough without the aid of a space heater or a hat or jacket. And there has been space for even very small groups of two to three to four people to meet. And we do not provide that for our employees, and I believe we should.
I'm Allison, over at 270 West Port Road. I have two questions, one for Tony and one for the, I guess, the school bonded. First of all, the Town Hall excellent natural plan, supportive. But it only addresses half the problem. It seems it's very overcrowded. Do we have a plan to deal with more space for the employees? And let us.
Thank you for that question. Indeed, we do have a plan. This is why we're convening, trying to board representative, representative justice summer right away after we, you know, finish this budget deliberation to convene. And we hope to elicit some help from those that have served on it previously as well to actually look at the entire Town Hall complex. We have a whole list of individual important maintenance and repair items that are categorized in Priority One, Two, and Three. This year, we only took apart Priority One, immediate, immediate needs. But we do have to certainly restore some meeting rooms, and we certainly have to address the constrained meeting spaces that we have. And we chop up our only meeting rooms into little cubicles for people to be able to work in. We have a serious problem, and yes, we will be addressing those and rolling out a plan, a ten-year plan to get it done.
The second, regarding the school, getting back to Miller Driscoll, like when they started off as, you know, windows and, and roofs at the time, maybe heating ventilation. And the more they got to Miller Driscoll, the more they realized that it just needed a complete rebuild. I'm thinking to Middlebrook, are we kind of in the same condition? Should we be spending this money or should we be putting up a more holistic building and looking at everything that needs to be done?
I can only speak to what the consultant's report says. Good evening. I'm Kevin Smith. I'm the superintendent of schools. And we've spent quite a long time working with the Town with Selectmen, looking at these buildings. And that's always a choice that the town can make. But the report that we got back from the consultant suggested that the bones of the building are very good. The design of the building is very good. It just needs to be upgraded. All of her mechanical, flooring, roofing, et cetera.
Thank you. Shereen Mobai, 284 Cannon Road. Thirty-year resident of Wilton, love the town. Great job by everyone involved, really great presentation. Thank you for all your hard work. Two questions I have. One is I see the town growing significantly, and I think we're going to need more space. But have we considered possibly going to a remote work environment with all the IT that we have instead of building additional buildings? Maybe looking at that. The second one is on Amler Farm, which I also love. I actually volunteered to plow the fields there. And it's a beautiful place, but maybe we can have an alternate use for it. Like a lot of weddings there. I think it's a zoning issue. And it would be great if we could have it as a commercial establishment.
The question about alternate locations for town services. We already are using Comstock to its maximum capacity. There isn't a room at Comstock now where we're not using it for various purposes. To disperse town offices in different locations, it's very inefficient, not helpful, and not good for production. And you try to keep them as close as possible. It's very important. When people come for building permits, they can also go to the town clerk and also go to the taxing assessor to keep things. And most town hall buildings are comprised like that. So we're hoping to keep as much of it together as we can. We've maximized the space we have. We do have five other town properties in town. We're assessing that. We took a field trip on them, but they're small, individual little houses set in different locations in town. Very inefficient, not appropriate. They're leased possibly for residents, maybe one or two people that can occupy, they're very, very old and also need tremendous amount of upgrading. As far as Amler Farm is concerned, we have a deed that is very detailed on what we can and can't do with those buildings. And they were designated for programming. And one building is a house that can be leased. We hope to be able to renovate it so that the individuals that work there, particularly the farmer, would be able to occupy and pay the town, you know, a market rate lease for it. So that's helpful to help it. But the other building is really designated, in the deed, by the way, for programs. The farm is being used for events right now and limited to small weddings because the neighbors in the area have way in and they don't want big events there. And then they couldn't send it. So there's, as I said, there's a lot in the deed that details what we can and can't do with those buildings.
My question actually was really about having employees work remotely from home, not from other locations.
Yes, we do some of that, some remote work. But too much of it has to interact with the general public. You know, especially at the town clerk where people come in for licenses. And we actually perform some weddings there every so often as well. But certainly, you know, the Town Hall annex with building permits and so forth. And people can now pay their taxes online. That is being done. But there's a lot of people that still come in. And we also have boxes outside where people can drop things off. So I think we maximize the ability to do remote. We do hold some meetings remotely. I'm not a fan of 100% online meetings for town committees and commissions. I think a hybrid is really desirable where you can be in person and also tune in or participate via Zoom so that you can do both and have experts come and way in without flying in. Some are driving long distances. So I think that hybrid method is very effective. But there's still a need for people to see their elected representatives and their town councils, you know, personally. Thank you.
Good evening. Wayne North, 501 Wood Hill Road. First, I'd like to echo what was said by someone else. Thanking everyone up on the stage who did their hard work and volunteer. And thanking the town for being more transparent than it's been in previous years. It's nice to know it's actually going on. And we appreciate you putting up bondage to do repair work instead of what I think is kicking the can down the road, leaving us in a situation where parts of the building are falling off. I support the bondage. I plan to be in this town for a very long time, forever. But I also would like to suggest to everyone in the room and maybe watching the video, to volunteer. There's a lot of things to be done, need to volunteer work instead of going on social media complaining, why can't we get this? Getting followed and help get it done. Thank you.
Joel Jones, 101 Horndale Road. Was to express a concern about the bonding of the continual maintenance of the town roads. Back in the seventies, I remember that Selectman Harvey Gosley made a campaign issue of this, saying that we should be paying as we go. And at some point, apparently that did take place because the maintenance was done out of the town budget, excuse me, out of the operating budget. But then, as we know, things, just some of the maintenance was kicked down the road, kicked down, whatever the expression is. And they had to make this big program of rescuing our roads. And so bonding was done for that. It was actually done for the, not just for the increase in cost, but for the entire maintenance budget. And so that first year was a, made it easier to balance the budget. But anyway, I'm not advocating that you not vote for this item, but I would suggest that perhaps you could consider either, well, anyway, at least gradually weaning the town off of the paying for this work through, to borrowing.
I would really like to address the road concerns that you have. I have a little history with this. Just so you know, the town does often pay straight out of their own operating budgets some bondable items, you know, when it can afford to do it and it makes a lot of sense and it's quicker and it's sometimes less costly to do it this way. And by the way, Moody's, our rating agency, does allow for that. They will allow even our excess fund balances to be used for a bondable item. However, on the roadside, I was here 40 years ago when we had a lot of dirt roads, very narrow roads, many impassable roads for school buses. And so a huge undertaking was to really pave all of the town roads and then put a plan in place so that we would regularly revisit Seven Mile every year so that by the end of this timeframe, you could get back to the first road that you did because over a 10-year period, which is sort of where they thought it would last 10 to 15 years, they would need repaving again. And it made a huge change in our community in Wilton. It really helped to spur its growth and its usability and its safety, particularly for our school buses. At that point, then, as you can see, the bonding agencies do allow At that point, then, as you can see, the bonding agencies do allow for the bonding of roads. They does have longevity. And I remember when that big sea change came, the gentleman who was her selectman at Desmond got booted out of office right after two years because the expenditure was so great. But he really saw the future and its needs, and he did sacrifice another term in order to put this in place so the town could engage in, you know, and be involved in a regularly reoccurring road program so that we continuously have good, safe roads.
But is it not possible for, for that, perhaps gradually, to be converted into a pay-as-go process so that we don't have the added cost of paying for money?
Sure. Well, you could say that almost anything. I think we're good. We take that under advisement.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, I'm Jim Murphy, 29, in the place, as others have mentioned. Thank all of you for your volunteer work and the work of the lady. My comment regarding the bonding issues. As Ms. Shea mentioned, that when they had space heaters, it looks like they were going to use less electricity. It would really helpful if on these discretionary items that we were, if it were possible to give an estimate of how, what the savings will be on the otherwise operating budget for more efficiencies, lower fuel costs, lower insurance and things like that. That I think helps us make a decision whether or not a given bonding item is appropriate. And I think my second comment is with the apartments and other things moving into Wilton, I think we should be considering upping how much we're spending on our roads. I think we're going to be having more people and take that into consideration for next year's budget. Yeah. Thanks. Thank you.
Yes.
Yeah, simply 183 Raindrop, just a process question. Somebody said or mentioned that you had a 15% threshold for the budget, or if you didn't, budget passed automatically. What is the same for these bonds?
Bonding is pure majority, whichever, it's an up or down, whatever the, whatever the total number of votes is.
Okay, thanks. Anybody else? Oh, yes.
Sorry, Peter Zogaravus, 1900 Stroud. I'm a transplant from New York, born and raised in Brooklyn, and I love your beautiful town. I've been here just passionately living and just experiencing this beautiful harmony between nature and the built environment. My question is, do you have, does Wilton have a sustainable design mission that kind of fits into all these projects that you've discussed?
Sustainability is an important factor in any new building we build. And certainly, any new items that we're able to install come with a better efficiency than certainly things that were built in 1930s for sure. But when it's a new building, like a new school building, you know, electrician's brand new, our police station, so forth, sustainability is a very major consideration.
I had a question about your, I guess, if that's been, like, any cooling energy savings there when it comes to these local things and so on.
Right at this point, it's premature for us to consider it, but it's certainly consideration going forward, especially if we build, you know, substantial new space in our, in our Town Hall and our school buildings as well.
Thank you for your wonderful presentation. Yes.
Towards the south of Zander 61, I was late, and I called all.
Your other questions?
All in the west.
It's Moses's job, I know. All right, ready the home stretch. Just a reminder that at the close and adjournment of the annual town meeting, we will adjourn for the vote. And there are various ways you can vote. First, you can vote tonight in the lobby. Second, you can vote on Saturday, this coming Saturday, May the 11th, between 8:00 AM and 6:00 PM. You must be in the building by 6:00 PM. And note that it is 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM, not 6:00 AM to 8:00 AM, which is what you normally get in a November election. The third way, you can apply for an absentee ballot at the in-person, at the town clerk's office during the town clerk's business hours on Wednesday, Thursday, or Friday of this week. And then they will give you the ballot, and you can actually vote and submit it on the spot. Alternatively, you can obtain the ballots from the town clerk's office, and they can be dropped off in the absentee ballot box at the back of Town Hall, not later than 6:00 PM on Saturday. Or they can be returned by mail or other delivery service. But if you do it by mail or other delivery service, it again must be received in the town clerk's office by 6:00 PM on Saturday. Being postmarked is not sufficient. And that does it. May I have a motion to adjourn?
I'm over.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.